Start with roll call.
First Shoemaker.
Scott Jensen.
Bill Blank.
Jeanette Santiago.
And with that, we have a quorum present. Asked to remind everyone that masks are still required here at the City Council. She would that, everyone. So, roll call, now we're on to minutes. Does anybody have any comments on the minutes?
I have no. Job.
During no comments, I would entertain a motion.
Motion that we approve. I'll second that.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the January thirteen twenty twenty-two Planning Commission Meeting Minutes. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Good. Now we are on to citizen input. Is there anybody that'd like to speak on any subject not on tonight's agenda? We don't have anybody online, do we? With no citizen input, we will now move on to new business. Packet SDR two dash two-one and PLA one dash two-one. Aine Phillip Mayo Contracting has requested approval of an application for site development review, SDR two dash twenty-one, to allow for the construction of a new three-eight-hundred-and-forty-square-foot auto sales facility and associated site amenities. The applicant also requests approval of a property line adjustment to remove the common property lines on the site, resulting in one legal lot of record. Applicant proposes to remove the existing buildings on-site as part of the project. Site is located at five-one-eight-zero-one Columbia River Highway, south of the southwest Old Portland Road and Columbia River Highway intersection. On property described is Columbia County Assessor map. Three-two-one-three dash E-O dash zero-zero-two-zero-zero. Three-two-one-three dash E-O dash zero-zero-three-zero-zero. This is, this is a limited land use decision. Calling this public hearing to order to consider an application for site development review and property line adjustment. Testimony and evidence must address the criteria that apply to the decision as described in the staff report, or to the criteria the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Limited land use decisions do not take verbal public testimony because they do not require interpretation or the exercise of policy or legal judgment. Any written comments shall be included in the record. Only staff, applicant, and the Planning Commission will have an opportunity to speak. Any Planning Commission member wish to declare any ex parte contacts or conflicts of interest regarding this matter? Does any party wish to challenge any commissioner's impartiality or legal capacity to participate in this matter? Seeing none? The order of the hearing will be the staff report, then the applicant's presentation, then a staff response. Thereafter, the hearing will be closed for consideration of the matter by the commission. Decision of the Planning Commission can be appealed to the City Council.
Just wanted to acknowledge that Rita is, is on the line now.
I'm sorry I'm late.
That's okay.
Had a little trouble.
Can everyone hear me all right?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. All right, well, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I'm going to start by going over the observations. That will be beginning on page nine of the packet. Then I will go over the approval criteria and where the findings to that criteria can be found. Then I'll move on to staff recommendation and the conditions of approval. So, starting on page nine. So, the subject site consists of four legal lots of record totaling one-point-nine-one acres. Three of the legal lots, which are described as, in this report referred to as tax lot two-hundred, currently contain the existing dealer's market, auto sales facility, several outbuildings, and an auto sales lot. The fourth legal lot of record, described in this report as tax lot three-hundred, previously contained a single-family house, garage, and landscaping. That house was recently demolished in order to incorporate that property into the overall site design for the new auto sales facility and site improvements. The subject site is designated as commercial on the comprehensive plan map and is zoned expanded commercial. Adjacent zoning is expanded commercial to the north and south and moderate density R-four to the east beyond Columbia River Highway and to the west beyond Old Portland Road. The subject site is bordered to the north by the Napa Auto Parts Store, to the east by Columbia River Highway, and beyond that by the railroad tracks and then residences on Davanna Drive. To the south by Grace Lutheran Church and a single-family residence near the southwest corner of the subject site. And to the west by Old Portland Road and beyond that by residences on Sequoia Street and Old Portland Road. Under site development review, again, the application is to allow for this construction of a new three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-square-foot auto sales facility. This would also be an expansion of the auto sales lot and then new landscaping. And you can see the proposed site plan, which is attached as exhibit four-G. The second request is for a property line adjustment. And again, that was just to remove the common property lines on the site, to make it into one legal lot, which is going to be important since the building can't, can't cross a property line. It also makes it a lot easier to assess the setbacks to the building. So, that final legal lot would then total one-point-nine-one acres. Under right-of-way and public improvements, again, the subject site has frontage on Columbia River Highway and Old Portland Road. There's no dedication of right-of-way required by this application. We are requiring, by the recommended conditions of approval, to replace any existing or damaged sidewalk panels on either frontage. Under vehicular access and off-street parking, the applicant is proposing to add one new driveway entrance at the southwestern corner of the site and to widen and improve the existing commercial driveway entrances at the northwest and northeast corners of the site. The SCAPUS Development Code requires one parking space per thousand square feet of gross lot area for auto sales uses. And so, based on this site's gross lot area, they must provide eighty-four parking spaces. The applicant is proposing to provide a hundred-and-thirty-three auto sales parking spaces as well as twenty-four staff or customer parking spaces. And then additionally, two bicycle parking spaces are being provided. Under traffic generation, the applicant did submit a traffic impact study letter, which was required. It estimated that the expanded sales facility would generate two new AM peak hour trips and three new PM peak hour trips in a total of nineteen new daily trips. The TIS letter provided a safety analysis within a quarter-mile of the development as required. Crash data, street lighting, site access, and circulation evaluations were conducted. As stated in the TIS, the low volume of new trips associated with the expansion of this project is expected to have minimal impacts to the existing roadways. And then ODOT did review this TIS letter and commented that everything looked fine. That response is included as exhibit sixteen to the packet. Under landscaping, screening, and street trees, the applicant submitted a landscaping plan. It depicts the provision of trees, shrubs, ornamental grasses, and ground cover throughout the subject site. Street trees are required along both street frontages, Highway thirty and Old Portland Road. The applicant is proposing to plant eighteen new street trees. And then, if you want to look at page seventy-eight, that's going to be the landscaping plan. As required by section seventeen-point-one-hundred-point-one-hundred, when different uses are butting one another, buffering and screening is required. As I had mentioned a second ago, there is a parcel to the southwest that's in residential use. It's tax lot nine-five-zero-one. And so, the applicant is required to meet the buffering and screening provisions along that section of their southwest property line. Though the landscaping plan does show the provision of a new five-foot cedar fence and then the necessary landscaping to meet the buffering requirements. And then, the other portion of this is that when the different uses would be butting one another, but they're separated by right-of-way, then buffering is required but not screening. And so, that applies to both the east and west properties. And so, the applicant has proposed buffering along the east and western property lines. Auto sales facilities also require a five-foot landscaped perimeter setback to surround all outdoor parking areas. The applicant is proposing shrubs and ground cover along the southern and northern property boundaries of the site to meet this requirement. Again, since the eastern and western property boundaries are already being, they already providing a ten-foot buffer, that, that's been met, that requirement's been met. Under lighting, the applicant submitted an exterior illumination and signage plan. That's exhibit four-K. It does depict the location of the exterior lighting throughout the site. Under public and private agencies, so city staff and local agencies had an opportunity to review the application. We did not receive any comments in opposition. The agency comments are attached as exhibits eleven through sixteen. And then, any comments that were related to the Planning Commission's decision are included in the recommended conditions of approval. All required noticing for this application has been met. We did receive one public comment, and so I'm going to read that into the record and just provide staff response to that as well. You should, you should have a printout of that. The comment was received within the public comment period. This email is from Patrick Russell, and I'll just go ahead and, and start reading. Thanks, Elizabeth, and to staff and members of our SCAPUS Planning Commission. As the street work on Old Portland Road is taking shape, here are some thoughts about the vehicle sales proposal. Number one, there is no night street lighting at the intersection of Old Portland Road and Sequoia. The developer might benefit from one for security. It's also a pretty busy intersection, and pedestrians are not very visible in the dark, in the dark pedestrian crossing, which includes students walking to and from the local schools. Staff response, there is a street light at Old Portland Road and Sequoia. This is planned to be upgraded along with the rest of the lighting in SCAPUS to LED equivalents. And then, we included a picture of that. Number two, as land use is single-family residential across Old Portland Road, auto-related parking lot night security and evening marketing of vehicles with lighting can create glare. All lighting on-site should have glare control so that their source of light is not visible at the property line along Old Portland Road. This concern also applies to service areas and buildings. Staff response, these types of site lighting concerns are addressed on each application and is stated in condition of approval number eight as follows. Parking lot and site lighting shall be designed to deflect light away from streets and neighboring properties. Fixer height, light type, and lighting levels shall function so as to assure compatibility with neighboring land uses. Shields shall be incorporated as necessary to minimize glare and to focus lighting to its intended uses, or intended area. The applicant shall install parking lot lighting, meeting IES standards to ensure safety and visibility on-site. The applicant shall submit a final site lighting and photometric plan for approval by the city engineer prior to building permit issuance. Number three, as the land use across Old Portland Road is single-family dwellings, the same front yard setbacks for single-family homes should apply to the site. Ideally, access drives should be limited so that there can be a minimum twenty-foot wide landscaped and irrigated improvement along the entire Old Portland Road frontage. It should consist of a balance of deciduous and evergreen tall growing trees and shrubs for the intermediate canopy level to screen vehicles on-site and related activities. If fencing is not architecturally integrated and residentially complimentary, it should be screened. For example, a six-foot chain link fence is not an attractive residential feature. Staff response, the expanded commercial zone sets the setback standards, which the applicant is in compliance with. Those findings are found in section seventeen-point-six-eight-point-oh-five-oh. Since this is a through lot, meaning it has frontage on two streets, there is a setback distance to each street of twenty feet. So, that was what was recommended in the comment, and actually, in fact, that is the setback here. The structure has a thirty-eight-foot setback to that western property line, so the one adjacent to Old Portland Road. And then, the setback to Highway thirties, I forget how, over a hundred feet, I think. The applicant is required to follow the applicable code section, which deals with buffering and screening requirements, which I, I just mentioned. So, I'm not going to read these findings here because we just went over that. But essentially, our code requires a, a ten-foot landscaped buffer, not a twenty-foot landscaped buffer, as suggested by Mr. Russell. But the applicant is meeting the ten-foot buffer requirements according to our code. Number four, used car lots can either be attractive or a visual community nuisance depending on, upon appearance and activities. As this is the only, as this is the city's only car sales facility, most of us would like to point to it as a good example when the work is completed. Staff response, we agree. This will be a significant upgrade to what is currently at the location, and we are glad that they are taking the approach to fully redevelop the site in full compliance with the code. Number five, all main access functions should be from the highway, not Old Portland Road. Vehicle loading and unloading should not occur on Old Portland Road. Staff response, the applicant meets the Public Works Design Section five-point-oh-oh-seven-oh for driveway access and spacing, and they have sufficient space on their site for loading and unloading of vehicles. Number six, to commemorate the perfectly healthy giant sequoia that was chopped down on the property near Old Portland Road, a new one should be planted in its stead. The adjoining street sequoia was named after it. Staff response, the sequoia in question was not listed as a heritage tree under the Development Code Chapter seventeen-point-one-four-one, and therefore did not have a protected status, nor does the property owner have any obligation to replant the tree. The property owner has the prerogative to plant any tree within their site and any tree from the approved street tree list within the right-of-way, per section thirteen-point-two-eight and seventeen-point-one-oh-four of the SCAPUS Municipal Code. The applicant is proposing to plant twenty-seven new trees on the site as part of this redevelopment project. And then, that, that total, it also includes the street trees within the right-of-way. That concludes the public comment. It has been read into the record and staff's response. That was the only public comment that we received on this application. And I'll be adding that to the staff report as exhibit seventeen with a revised staff report date of March tenth. All right, so, for the criteria and the findings, you can find the criteria related to the expanded commercial zone in chapter seventeen-point-six-eight. Those findings are on pages eleven through thirteen. For the landscaping, screening, and fencing, that is in chapter seventeen-point-one-hundred. The findings are on pages thirteen through sixteen. For off-street parking and loading, that would be chapter seventeen-point-one-oh-six. The findings are on pages sixteen through twenty. For site development review, that is chapter seventeen-point-one-two-oh, and the findings are on pages twenty through twenty-three. For the property line adjustment, that's found in chapter seventeen-point-one-five-two, and the findings are on page twenty-four. For street and utility improvement standards, that is in chapter seventeen-point-one-five-four. The findings are on pages twenty-four through twenty-nine. And then, if you can turn to page thirty. And on page thirty, we have staff's recommendation. So, based on the findings of fact and the materials submitted by the applicant, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve SDR two-twenty-one and PLA one-twenty-one. And then, that's subject to the conditions of approval. We do have twenty-nine conditions of approval. Essentially, it's just requiring, you know, compliance with our codes. It's really nothing, nothing out of the ordinary here. We did, then I did add conditions of approval twenty-five through twenty-nine, and those are the comments from, from the fire department. So, I just pulled those into our conditions. That concludes kind of the overview of the application.
Commissioners have questions for staff?
I do. Have your hands up.
Okay.
This is Jeanette Santiago. So, kind of going back on to the removal of the trees, and this is my first kind of, this type of development. So, I'm going to be, I might ask questions that are already addressed. But, for example, you guys, you did mention that they already removed that property on Old Portland Road, and they already removed that huge, I'm guessing that's what is, the sequoia they were talking about? It's really huge tree that was near some power lines? I'm, I'm guessing that so. I don't think, is that still, or is that tree still there? Has those power lines been addressed? So, that, I mean, I guess that's my, another question too. But I was wondering, does the applicant have to submit some type of like demo or tree removal permit?
Yeah, so, I will let the applicant answer your question about what's still there now. But to answer your second part of, of your question, they did have to apply for a demo permit, so that was done already, and that demo permit has been finaled out. So, that's complete. The only time you-
I'm sorry, it's not in here, in this packet, because I didn't see it.
No, that's a separate process. That's not required for land use approval, or, you know, that's not a part of the land use approval packet. They did that separately ahead of time.
Okay.
And then, as far as the tree removal, the only time you have to get a permit for tree removal in SCAPUS is if it's within the right-of-way and it's a street tree. If it's on private property, we don't have any permits required for removal.
Okay. And so, what's currently there?
And I will let, yeah, I'll let the applicant answer that once, once they're up here.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, well, it's time for the applicant's presentation. Please come forward and speak into the mic very clearly so that it's a good record.
Pull it down so you can-
Masks are required in the building, so I'd say hold it close. Mask on.
Right. Is the microphone on?
You can ask them if they can hear you all right.
You hear me up there?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, the, this dealership has been going for, at this site for a number of years and doing well. Dealing in newer cars, they have a detail, they have, well, there's a detail of the cars, they fix them up very nicely. They move them through, and I think it's a very big benefit to the community to have a used car dealership of this, I don't know, I would call it stature. These are nice cars that they deal in. Site has been expanded over the, over the years. I think a fellow named Jack Foley originally developed it back in twenty years ago or so. This recent purchase of the, of the lot right in the middle of it makes it one almost square lot, and it's going to make it a lot nicer to look at. That, the trees were, and bushes were kind of, well, they were large and unmanaged, it's all gone now. The site is going to be, every, every, every thing that has been asked of us has been engineered into it. Fire access, the garbage box access, the concrete, the swale runoff, the lighting. We're ready to move ahead if, if you approve it. And I would, I would certainly like, I'd also like to say that Mr. Pike is a, is a hard-working businessman, and, and you just don't hear of any complaints. Don't hear, you don't see unhappy people bringing back cars, and he's, he's just doing a very, a very upright and decent, honest business there. And I, I certainly would hope that you would approve of this upgrade. Any questions?
Well, I, I do, I'm just wondering if the, those power line issues have been addressed? And what still stands there where the property, where the house was demolished?
All the trees have been removed. The old holly trees and a row of cedar trees have all been taken out. That, it's, I think, I don't, oh, the, the power lines, the power lines are gone as well, the power lines are gone as well. So, I guess it has been addressed.
So, the power lines are gone? I'm, I guess I'm confused on that. Weren't they needed, or were they out-of-commission power lines?
Out-of-commission.
Okay.
Yeah, the, yeah, the two houses are gone, so the power's, power's gone.
Okay. And I do have another question. There's on your, on page seventy-four, C-three, on your line twenty-nine. You said that there is a abandoned existing water meter. Is that, do you mean the, the fire hydrant? Is that what you mean?
No, that, there's a, there were two, well, now that the properties are being combined, there are two water meters that had been in use for many, many years, and we're probably going to use one of them again for supply. Plus, the existing dealership has its own water supply too, so I guess there would be three.
Okay. It's just, I looked at, it looked to me like the fire hydrant was going to be removed, so I was wondering if you guys are going to replace it or move it, or what's the plan?
No, the fire hydrant stays.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant commissioners?
How long is it, you say you're ready to start on this if it gets approved? But instruction would start this summer and be done when the summer's over? Is that what you're talking about or are we talking about?
Jeff, can you talk into a microphone if you do want to talk?
Yeah. With the COVID that has, uh, upset many markets, it's, it's become difficult to find erectors, of all things. And, uh, although we had a, a solid erector when the process started back in two thousand nineteen, uh, he has since backed out of the erection part of it and is only willing to provide the kit. So we are, we're looking at three or four other companies that are, uh, providing, uh, erection as well. So, uh, and we also have a business to run while this is going on, which, uh, it's not a, you know, clear site where we're developing the whole process at once. We've got trenching to put in for lights and, and, uh, irrigation, we've got, uh, we've got blacktop that's gotta be cut up and then refilled almost the same day. There, there's, there's some, a lot of dirt work that has to happen before we actually start doing the building. And it's, you've got to make sure that the business can run, uh, while we're doing this. So we're, you know, we'll try to make it as, we'll try to make it look as good as we can through the process. But there's gonna be trenching and, uh, trucks bringing in gravel for fill and, uh,
You're gonna have some control over dust and stuff like-
Oh, yeah. Well, the, the site's pretty well blacktopped right now, uh, for the most part. So, uh, we're not, we're not ripping that blacktop out. We're, we're gonna be augmenting it, so.
Got a one-year opportunity here once it's approved, if it does get approved. So, they have plenty of time, I'm just curious to see as to how long it will-
Well, yeah, we-
That, that's to start the project though, right?
Yeah.
I mean, so it's- It has nothing to do with finish.
Any other questions? All right, uh, any new other questions? And, uh, go ahead and, uh, actually, is there any staff response?
No, I mean, I think this is fairly straightforward. Yeah. Just let us know if you have any other questions. I don't think there's any additional statements needed.
And I will close the hearing for right now.
I'm sorry. I have, I'm sorry, I have one request if for the builder, if that's okay. I know that there was the, it was brought up about the sequoia. Is there something that, um, for the people that do live there and they're very traditional about that tree, to consider putting a sequoia tree?
My, I'm gonna, I'm gonna respond to that, actually. My, my understanding, and I actually did see an email come back through, um, from their, um, project engineer on, on this topic, which was, um, sequoias are not, you know, ideal trees in, in an urban setting like this when they're redeveloping their site. It's obviously a very, very large tree. And so it just, it wouldn't fit with, with this site in this development. Because they only have that ten-foot planted, um, planter strip. So that, it just, it's not sized properly for this, for this project.
Okay, that's a good point. Thank you. Thank you, Lori.
Of course, yeah.
Okay, and very much. And we will now close the hearing and move on to deliberations by the planning commission. Boss commissioners?
Well, I read through the whole proposal, it seems extremely detailed. It's following all of ordinances and things that we're supposed to look for. I did not see anything that would staff missed or anything. They're quite this efficient group, so I, I would say that this is a project that should be approved.
I agree with Bruce there, that this is, uh, something that it's been existing business that is now coming to another stage of development. Positive rate for them. I had no idea. I have no idea exactly architectural, from the architectural renderings, what it's gonna be like. I won't know that till I see it. Sure, it will look good, but, uh, everything else is in compliance. No reason to deny it, we don't have a reason to deny it. I think once we approve it, it's, it's done, it goes to the city here, so. Say, no, we're probably going that direction.
The other comments, commissioners, online?
Well, I mean, it seems like the, um, issues were addressed, like traffic was addressed and lighting has been addressed and landscaping, even though they are getting rid of, rid of some trees, they do plant to plant some new, um, trees. And so on the two-D image, it looks great. So just like, um, Bill says, I'm not quite sure how it would look on the three-D. But, um, if it's gonna be an improvement, then, you know, I approve it.
All right.
Rita?
Rita, did you have anything to say? I can just echo the comments of my fellow commissioners saying, everything looks like it's order and no reason not to approve this. The other comments from the commissioners, otherwise could entertain a motion?
Go ahead, one. Looked like Bruce is about ready to say, so.
Me? Oh, yeah. No, I, I wasn't ready to go to the thing. I moved that we approve socket SDR one or two dash twenty-one, PLA, uh, one dash twenty-one, as this has been- Is there a second?
There ain't no second. I will say, second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, I will go ahead and, uh, call for the vote. All those approving, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, uh, then it's approved, mission's as presented. Congratulations. I'll look forward to you guys getting, getting everything you need to be able to move forward. Hey, now that we are done with the business, we can move on to communication. So, first is calendar check. And looking at the calendar. Don't forget this weekend, set your clocks ahead an hour.
Oh, yes.
He might say-
Tuesday, the fifty-year stakeholder advisory committee meeting is happening at six. I know I'm sitting on that committee, who else is on that?
Um, so the, the mayor appointed the chair of the planning commission. But there is a group, I'm sorry, I don't have the roster with me. Actually, Commissioner Santiago is, um, also on the committee, um, but representing, um, I forget the exact wording we're using, but basically under, traditionally underrepresented community. And so that's all from the planning commission.
So the last meeting, the first inaugural, everybody was invited and we all had a chance to-
Correct. So, and we will continue that. So those are called the decision-maker work sessions. And so there are, um, quite a number of those planned throughout the, throughout the whole project. And that, those are the joint planning commission and city council briefings. Yep.
I do have a thought to share with people. I already have.
Yes, and I, yeah, and I-
I don't want to pass it on to-
And, um, and I've already shared it with our consultants. And so they do have the information. And then what I was suggesting is that once we have that works, the next work session, that you could share that as well to the greater group. And then that way the counselors can hear and everything. Yep.
Let's see, then, uh, Thursday the seventeenth, Parks and Rec Committee meeting at six P M. Sunday the twenty-first, council work session at six, followed by city council meeting at seven. Thursday the twenty-fourth, economic development committee at noon. And it looks like no planning commission meeting?
No, no.
And we move to April, Monday, April four, council work session at six, followed by a city council meeting at seven. Tuesday, April twelve is another fifty-year stakeholder advisory committee meeting at six. Thursday the fourteenth, we have planning commission at seven.
These were just placeholders. I don't think we'll have a meeting in April.
Not in April?
Uh-uh.
An eye on official word. Thanks for the heads up. Monday, the eighteenth, council work session at six, followed by a city council meeting at seven. The first, economic development committee at noon, Parks and Rec committee at six. Looks like the week of the eighteenth, there's gonna be some birthday events. And then Saturday, April thirty, I'm assuming that's annual town meeting?
Yes, it is.
At ten o'clock at, in the morning, at Scappus High School.
And that's a mistake, that should say, um, nine. We open the doors at eight-thirty for, uh, coffee and, and snacks. And then, um, and then the mayor will, will kick it off at nine A M.
Oh, instead of ten, aye.
Yeah, or eight-thirty. And you should see some more advertisement going, going out about that over the next, um, month. One thing I also wanted to add, um, I think it kind of got finalized, um, just very, very recently. But also on April seventh, um, I think Liz gave you all, um, one of these. So April seventh is our boards and commissions appreciation dinner, which we have not held for the last two years because of COVID. So, um, this should be a good time. It is yourself and plus one, so, and it'll be at six P M at Ixtapa.
Right? And with that, uh, on to commissioner comments. Commissioners have any comments they wish to offer for the good of the order?
They have none?
Other than good, uh, presentation, again, as always from staff.
Thank you.
Makes it very easy when we have good presentations.
Hey Lori, I have a question, just kind of on the side, just to, when they get rid of a lot of stuff like that, like asphalt, I mean, they, he did say that they were gonna keep their ass, the asphalt, I think. And they get rid of like a lot of, like, large area and debris. Do they, do they have to follow some type of environmental type of regulation for the city?
I guess I'll jump in on that one. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So the only regulatory requirement for demo is usually asbestos abatement in the existing house or, or a building for that matter. So whatever, whatever they might find in terms of asbestos or lead, they'd have to, they'd have to bait that in accordance with the D Q requirements.
Yeah, but I don't think the asphalt's really gonna trigger, trigger anything.
So, yeah, so on any of the hardscape items like asphalt, concrete, um, pervious materials, none of that is regulated. And in fact, it usually goes over to, uh, the Scappus sand and gravel where it's recycled. And it can be reused in, in, uh, making new asphalt. Actually do use asphalt to make, you know, ground asphalt to make new asphalt. They're, they're, they're getting their aggregate out of it. Um, the concrete also gets recycled and gets reused, uh, under building pads. And it can be used on private, uh, parked air, parking areas. Uh, they, you know, it's approved reuse that way. It's a good structural fill. Uh, we don't allow it in the, in the street because it makes it too hard to get through to get back to utilities. But it has been used in Scappus in the past, we just, we don't allow it now. But it can be used on private projects.
Okay. You guys do address it with them initially when they ask for those permits?
They have to obtain it, yeah, they can obtain a, a demo permit. Uh, it's, it's not, there's no land use required for that. They can, they can pull a demo permit whenever they want. And the building official, we all sign off on it. Planning, engineering and the building official. And they, they have to, um, take care of any, um, like I said, asbestos abatement. There's also a requirement for them to abandon any, uh, uh, oil tanks in accordance with D Q requirements. They have to cap sewer lines, they have to decommission water lines and remove the meter. All of those utilities get capped. Any, uh, septic systems get, uh, decommissioned in accordance with the county, uh, sanitarium. So they work with them on that. Natural gas, all the franchise utilities get, uh, they, those, those entities are contacted and those services are terminated in accordance with those folks.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Might add one thing in relation to that, um, for new commissioners. Few years back, uh, we as a commission almost approved every removal of every tree.
I heard about that.
Turned around and gave that permission back to staff to make those decisions. Unless it's an exceptionally different kind of thing, like a heritage tree or something like that. So we do not see what they routinely do and they take care of what we used to do. It's take a lot of time in a meeting that had nothing to do really with the odd, real problem or whatever they were trying to, you know, approve. So just give you a little feel and then background. So you know, you probably never see anything in front of you about removing a tree.
Remember being a part of those discussions.
He does remember that.
Um, any other commissioner comment? Any staff comments?
Yeah, I just have a few things. So again, we kicked off the fifty-year plan. First, um, stakeholder advisory committee meeting is next Tuesday, so that should be good. One of the projects I've been working on pretty much since I started at the city is the East Airport project. Starting with the appeal of the U G B application being finalized, um, in two thousand fifteen to the annexation that occurred of that three hundred and fifty acres in two thousand sixteen to the approval of the subdivision in two thousand seventeen. Uh, I think we're gonna have a plat for the first two phases probably next week. So, um, that's exciting. I told them today to print the milars, so, um, that's great. Upon recording of those first two phases of that subdivision, the city will then inherit a fourteen-acre, uh, public park space, public parkland. So that is great. It's kind of at the southeast, um, sort of corner of where the runway is. So that is coming along nicely. Let's see, I did get the second submittal for the food cart pod application, so that's great. That came back in, um, I haven't looked at it yet, um, that's on my to-do list. I haven't looked at it yet, that's on my to do list in the next two weeks. They didn't have a ton of things to address, I'm hoping it's in good shape and we can get them scheduled for a hearing with you guys. And let's see, I think that's all I have, just my quick notes, did you have anything to share?
I'm sure, I'll, I'll give you a real quick rundown on what, what engineering's got going on. And we've got a number of projects in construction. Probably the one you're noticing the most is Old Portland Road, the sidewalk project. Hopefully that hasn't been too painful for folks, really appreciate everybody's patience with that. I think, we think it's going to be a great addition to have sidewalks down both sides the road there and have a nice surface for, a nice wide lanes for driving and just make it.
As one who drives through there, quite frankly, right now I know it's a pain.
Yeah, and it, yeah.
What I do notice is how much it will be so much better because I see the kids who come in from school during their morning break. And they don't have to be walking out in the street, they'll have a sidewalk to walk on, that'll be really an improvement for them.
And, and we, a, a part of that, we've been working really hard with the post office to clean up the mailboxes that are out of compliance with ADA, and so it's, it's a number of them block the sidewalk. So we're going to aggregate those into either two or three locations on the, on the west side. They call them central box units, so they're the combined boxes, they'll be really nice metal ones, so it'll also prevent, help prevent theft, which is a huge problem on Old Portland Road, so. We're looking forward to seeing that get wrapped up, the contract, I will say the contractor's been having difficulty getting material. Storm drainage parts, pipe and concrete parts, manholes and things like that, so that's kind of holding things up, but where they're doing what they can to, to get through it. We've got, of course, work going on at East Airport Phase Three and Four to connect it to Ring Ring Road, that's, that's ongoing, that's, that's going to keep going for a few more months. Out at Olmec, they're continuing to remodel the building out there and the site. And the additive center, which is a new building. It's closer to Charles T. Parker Road, the underground work is, is ongoing with that. And they're prepping the, the pad area for the building package, it'll be a metal building. So you'll, you'll probably see that come up, go vertical in a few weeks, months. And then we have, of course, Second Street Apartments going on, that's pretty visible. There, that's going really well, they've got all the, all of their paperwork in order, so it's, it's just up to them to, to work through all of the, you know, conflicts with all the contractors out there, it's a pretty small site with a lot of people on it. And then finally, we've got Thompson Woods Subdivision, it's nine lots over on Sixth and Elm. It's going to be a nice little project.
Yeah, they just got approval last November and it's going, they're going to pull permits on the houses in May, so it's, it's real quick.
Yeah, it's, it's really, it's going really, really fast, that one is we're trying to work with them to get a little more of an improvement out there on the road, so hopefully we can do that, pull together a little bit of extra funding to make that happen. And then we, we do have a, for the city, we have Bella Vista water line replacement, which is sorted to create some redundancy in our water lines to the Bella Vista reservoirs. We don't really have that right now, so this is kind of a phase one to add redundancy to those high zone reservoirs. We think that's really important, and then let's see, and then another big plan set we just got was the East Airport More Road Water Line, which again will create some redundancy for water around the airport, it'll loop a, a major water line around the airport and bring it all the way back to Skyway Drive, which completes about a, about a five mile loop of eighteen inch water, it's very significant. And we're hoping to see plans for Dutch Canyon Phase Four within the next months, so we're looking forward to that. And of course, you know, we're looking forward to getting dealer market plans in, they have a really good plan set. They just, they need to add some detail for construction, but it should be pretty quick to get those turned around and, and approved. And then just to kind of wrap things up, some of the other things we're working on in the background, Stormwater Master Plan is still in process, that's, it'll last a few more months. We're also working with the Skeppus Fire Department on their I S O rating. It's coming up, which sets the insurance rates for everybody in Skeppus. And we're going to, we're going to work with them to make sure that they can get the highest ratings they can with regard to the city's systems, which really involves hydrants and the water lines distribution. And then Lori and I have been working also behind the scenes, the drainage district on a Lomar update, paint update. It's a part of the certification of the levy, the last step in there. Hope to have some more analysis done, and then they'll be able to submit to FEMA. And then they'll do their review and hopefully if all goes well, have a new boundary, mostly on the east side.
I'm sorry, you're kind of coming, cutting in and out, I'm sorry, so you have, have a new development on the east side, you said?
No, just it's, it'll, the floodplain lines will be an impact to the east side of town, it, it won't really anything west of the highway.
I see, okay.
I have one question to ask you, there was been some discussion that's been floating around in the paper about development across from Veterans Park.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Yeah, and so that's called the Buxton Ranch Development. I did receive their land use application in late February, so that's under completeness review right now. They, they did already submit a conditional letter of map revision request to FEMA because their plan is to modify the floodplain boundary on their parcel by essentially recontouring the land. It has to meet our development code, so we did review that to make sure that what they were showing, like their cuts and fills are balanced, they're not adding adding fill to, to the floodplain. It's a no net fill, so wherever they have added, they've had to cut an equal amount within the floodplain. And so I don't want to say too much about it because obviously it's going to come for, to you for a decision. But it is in its first completeness review, we did require them though to get FEMA's sign off before we would process it through locally our permitting process. So FEMA's reviewing that request, it doesn't mean that the green light for them, what it just means is that if they were to build their project exactly as shown according to their grading plans and development, that after they were to do the work, then FEMA is basically saying ahead of time, we will let you amend the floodplain map as you're proposing, so they, you know, so FEMA looks at it, they say, okay, yeah, we're conditionally approve this. They would still have to come back, get local approval, make those changes to the land, and then submit their as built, showing that it's exactly the way they planned to do it, and then they have to apply for another letter of map revision, that's the actual one, it's not conditional, then it's the actual letter of map revision. Once that was signed off on and approved by FEMA, the floodplain map would change on that parcel. And then after that, they could build the houses, which they're proposing all the lots would be outside of the floodplain.
So it sounds like it's something that's not going to happen overnight.
Nope, it'll take a little while, well, FEMA will, FEMA will have comments within ninety days of submittal. So either saying we need more information or it's approved. So they're within that ninety day period right now, so they went ahead and submitted for land use, they're fairly confident it's going to be approved. But again, we won't process it, I won't deem the application complete until we see that.
It's three months away before.
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes. But you're probably going to see stuff in the paper about it and just, you know, when it comes to you, you'll need to declare any expedite contact, that you've seen it, that you've talked about it, that you, all of that.
All righty.
Mm-hmm, and Tanet?
So what's, do you have a, a deadline, like once they complete, it said, submitted completed application, do you have like ninety days or a certain time?
Yeah, so, yeah, and so I have to make a determination of whether it's complete or not within thirty days. And so I will be deeming it incomplete for this first review because, you know, FEMA hasn't signed off yet. In addition to any, any items we see in their application that are incomplete or that we need more information on. And then they ultimately have up to a hundred and eighty days to make it complete, so that's why they felt comfortable with going ahead and submitting now because they're, they're pretty sure that they'll, they'll hear something within that ninety day period and be able to, you know, have it deemed to complete in plenty of time for that hundred and eighty day deadline.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, because you guys are really busy and bombarded, I'm just wondering if they just, you know, you didn't complete it, you go back a little line.
No, we're mandated by the state to process in a certain number of days.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay, thanks.
I think, I think that's it.
That's it, so I've got eight oh two and I will close the meeting, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.